So welcome everyone to the Town of Arlington's 215th Annual Town Meeting. Before we begin tonight, I want to acknowledge that the decision to go with a remote town meeting was a difficult one. And I recognize for a lot of folks, a remote meeting isn't their first choice. For others, news of a remote meeting has come as a relief for their own safety or the safety of members of their households. It seems that these days lots of issues deeply divide us. And while that creates challenges, it also creates opportunities like the opportunity to find the humanity in each other, to give folks the benefit of the doubt, especially those we disagree with. And the opportunity to embrace the better angels of our nature for the sake of the public that we serve together. I want to thank my predecessors, Mr. Warden and Mr. Leone, who have left large shoes to fill. All of us here tonight, regardless of our role or office, we're all temporary stewards of this town government and we honor and acknowledge those who have served before us. And we welcome those who will come after us. At this time, I'd like us to remember those town meeting members and their spouses who've passed in the last year. Bill Hayward, Nancy Ortwein, Lyman Judd, Brian Rarick, Roger Barnaby, Janet Chaput, wife of the late town meeting member Roland Chaput, Elaine Shea, wife of the late town meeting member Bill Shea, and Beatrice Barber, wife of the late town meeting member Harry Barber. And I know a lot of us here tonight, like that some of these folks have touched our lives in in some profound ways, either as like a mentor or a friend. And so we honor their memory and Roger Barnaby in particular, I know was responsible years ago for an article that allowed for alcohol to be served at restaurants in Arlington. So any of those, anyone who has a drink, a non-alcoholic beverage respectfully, I raise a glass to Mr. Barnaby for his contributions to the town tonight. So let's now take a moment of silence to remember and honor the memory of all these Arlingtonians. Great, thank you. Next, I'd like to introduce Reverend Erica Richmond, who will present our invocation tonight. Reverend? Let's see, is Reverend able to unmute?
I unmute, but I can't, I don't have permission to show my video if someone wants.
Oh, is is someone on the, let's see. Is someone able to promote Erica's connection to the panel? There we go, we can see you now.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I'm Reverend Erica Richmond. I am one of the ministers at the First Parish Congregation in Arlington, right in the town center. It is an honor to be with all of you tonight. I thank you for the invitation to give this invocation. I appreciate that our moderator began with looking towards our past, those who have shaped who we are today. It is good and right to remember those who have passed on, just as it is good and right to remember the history of our town. I want to acknowledge that we are on tribal land of the Massachusetts people. Even in our history, it's important to remember what is complicated. I also want to name that we are in the middle of Ramadan. If you are observing Ramadan, a happy Ramadan to you. We just finished Passover and Easter and spring. There are many holy and holidays for many folks and many faiths. So whatever you celebrate or whatever you are bringing here tonight, I am glad you are with us. I invite you to take a deep breath, maybe stretch and get comfortable. I know you have a lot ahead of you and I invite us to begin with a moment of invocation and meditation. Whatever a posture of prayer is for you, I invite you into that in this moment. Spirit of life and love, be with each of us as the sacred work of democracy begins. The task of our elected leaders is not always an easy one. During this third year of pandemic, many of us are short on time, short on patience, short on our capacity to hear one another well. So let us begin this evening with gratitude, thankfulness for each other's willingness to serve, willingness to show up, willingness to create a better, more just, more abundant world. These are the days we have been given. There is so much to fear in our world, so much to shield from our children. Too many of our friends and neighbors can't make ends meet, can't protect their families from racism or xenophobia, can't feel safe in their own homes. Tonight, we especially send prayers to the people of Ukraine and to all nations and territories experiencing violence and conflict. There are so many reasons not to trust one another. And yet we know that our better selves can create love, can dismantle systems of harm, and make connections across differences. May we be called forward by hope. May we recognize a hand outstretched. May we witness the currents of love and care underneath bouts of misunderstanding and disagreement. These are the days we have been given. May we trust in goodness and mercy, believing in the noble and humble intentions of one another. This is a prayer that even in uncertainty knows a path will unfold. Another way is possible. This is not an invocation of Pollyanna sensibilities. No, this is a radical hope born out of hard times, born out of struggle. May we be emboldened by those who have gone before us. The earth cries out for something new. In our small corner of the globe, may we do all that we can to make that so. These are the days we have been given. Let us be proud of what we can accomplish together. Blessed be and amen.
Great, thank you Reverend. Thank you for joining us tonight. Next on the agenda, we're going to do the swearing in for any newly elected or newly appointed town meeting members. So can we bring up the oath of office? Okay, so if you are newly elected or newly appointed and have not been sworn in yet as a town meeting member, please, well, you can choose to rise or not. So just repeat after me, I state your name, will participate fully and will fairly evaluate all matters before town meeting and vote in the best interests of the town. I support free speech and will treat others with mutual respect and will conduct myself in a civil manner that is becoming of an elected town meeting member. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties incumbent upon me as a town meeting member of the Town of Arlington in accordance with the bylaws, the Town Manager Act, and the general laws of the Commonwealth. So help me God. Thank you. You are now sworn in as town meeting members. So let's let's move on now to the, we have a video recording from a few years ago of the Monotomy Minutemen who normally, if we were in an in-person meeting, would be presenting this in front of us all live. But we'll play that video and look forward to hopefully next year when we'll be able to see this performance live at Town Hall.
Woman, please rise. Whenever you're ready.
Great, thank you. So next, we're going to vote to authorize virtual town meeting. And what this means is that town meeting as a body needs to vote with a majority vote on whether to continue the proceedings of this meeting remotely or not. And I'll just briefly explain what that means, which is that town meeting members will now vote on, this is kind of the last hurdle, like when I decided a couple of weeks ago to kind of start the process of preparing for a remote town meeting, I forwarded that request to the select board. They approved it with a majority of select board members voting. And now it comes before town meeting to vote on this. And this is like the final procedural step. And so if this vote succeeds, then we'll continue with town meeting in this virtual format. And if the vote fails, then we're kind of back to the drawing board and we have to figure out a different way of proceeding with only being able to do so in person. And we'll have to figure out what that means. So I will, so this is a bit unconventional procedurally, because this isn't how most of our votes and debate will work. So this is kind of a one-off situation that's unique to yeah, to this particular vote. So I'm trying to correct my view here so I could see what everyone else is seeing. Okay. Okay, here we go. And let's, can we bring up the, Julie, after you're done bringing up the opening the vote, can you also show the, let's see, the text, it's a very short piece of text associated with this vote from the annotated warrant, basically just like a one-liner, basically. Yeah, it's the one that, yes, it just says vote, yep. Okay. So, right, so here's the reference to Massachusetts general laws that, that will allow us to proceed with a remote town meeting if this vote is successful. And the short version of the story is that if, you know, if the vote fails, there are a number of ways that we can proceed, one of which is that we would adjourn this meeting immediately. And then a bunch of us would go off and scramble to figure out how to do, like one possibility is an abbreviated town meeting. Like we did, if you remember, a couple of years ago on the high school football field where we would basically address the most urgent and critical articles and we would postpone everything else to like a special town meeting at some point later in the year. That's, that's one way that we could proceed. I prefer that we just approve this vote and then we can continue on remotely for the remainder of this meeting. And so something else that's a bit kind of unconventional about this is that I will open up the, let's see, we have a, I'll open up the speaker queue in a moment for folks to ask questions that either I or town council or others might be able to answer about the implications of voting yes or no on this vote, because it is a bit unconventional. Because we're voting on how we're going to proceed in the format of this meeting or not. It's not a typical kind of policy article that we would usually take up. And so I do want to give folks an opportunity to ask questions about that. And I do want to be clear that this is not a, this is not a, an opportunity for folks to speak on the merits of meeting in person versus the merits or issues of meeting remotely, but to ask questions about procedurally what it means if this vote fails, because that's kind of a subtle and complicated thing. They want to make sure everyone has an understanding of before we go ahead and vote. And so can we, let's see. I see that debate is closed here. Is there a way for us to open up debate on this so that we can, yeah. And let's see, I see that we have a point of order right now. So why don't we take that and also before we do take Mr. Wagner's point of order, I do want to be clear, not just for this vote, but through the remainder of the meeting, that I'm going to be fairly restrictive about what we allow for points of order. Because points of order are really about informing the meeting about things that prevent us from kind of going off the rails procedurally. And it's not an opportunity for folks to weigh in about their opinions on things. But it's really about keeping the meeting on track from a procedural perspective. And so if there is abuse of point of order, and we've had that in recent years, then I'll have to take measures to potentially rate limit or restrict the use on an individual basis. If particular, if individual members are, in my view, abusing the point of order mechanism. So hopefully it doesn't come to that and that we're using it just for procedural matters. So let's take Mr. Wagner's point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
Thank you, Carl Wagner, Precinct 15. We are enjoying seeing you and similar to a point of order or personal privilege, as in the room is too hot, I cannot understand what the person is saying because the microphone is not working. I would like to speak for all of the town meeting members here that we deserve to see each other regardless of what our positions are. It is not right, two years into town meeting, to have technical or preference issues to keep us from being seen. Please make sure that as soon as possible, we can be seen this year and definitely next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. So I'll just briefly respond to that, that my intention, when I first started looking into the prospects of a remote town meeting, which was basically going back about two and a half, almost three weeks ago, having been sworn in basically three weeks and 11 and a half hours ago, that I was really interested in the possibility, if we were going to do remote, that we would allow town meeting members to show video. And I won't go into the details as to why we decided not to go that route. But there were technical obstacles in how a Zoom webinar works and the promotion of individuals from attendees to the panel. And I don't want to bore everyone with the details with that. I'm happy to take that issue offline and discuss that in another venue. Okay, so we have a second point of order, Mr. Warden. And please state your name and precinct number.
John Warden, Precinct 8. Am I audible?
I can hear you. Go ahead.
No, I, the point of order is the question of, are you going to allow people to speak to the merits of your proposition?
I will allow people to ask questions about the implications of the votes.
We're not really going to have any, any, any opportunity for people to state their preferences for, for against the virtual meeting?
Not in this format at this time, no. And reason for that, I feel, is that the state does not, the state and town council can, can weigh in on this. I spoke with town council earlier, state law does, does not specify when, when this clause is invoked, like for attempting to, to proceed with a remote town meeting, does not specify whether a debate is required, a town meeting, just that a majority vote is required.
We, we, we debate everything else.
Yeah.
This is a very important issue.
It is. And under the circumstances, because this is, this is essentially a, a meta-political issue rather than a traditional political issue. Metapolitical being that it's about how the meeting itself is conducted, that it's really standing on different procedural ground than a typical article, which is debating the merits or otherwise of, of a legislative or policy issue. And this is just about whether to proceed with the meeting. And so it's kind of on untested ground.
If I were moderator, I'd allow the town meeting to vote on how they're going to meet.
Right. So we are going to vote on how we're going to meet. I'm just restricting the speaking to questions about the procedural aspects of what it would mean if, if this vote fails, because that might not be clear to a lot of folks. So, but I take your point and I appreciate your perspective. So is there anything else, Mr. Warden? Say, do we still have Mr. Warden there? I think.
This meeting is supposed to vote on, we should be allowed to, to discuss it. We're not, we're not the Chinese Communist Parliament.
No, no, we're not. And that's why everyone gets a vote. And, and I'm happy to entertain questions in the regular speaking queue for folks who have questions about what it means to proceed or not proceed. Okay. Great, thank you. Do we? So I will entertain at this point any requests for people to enter the speaking queue. So if you look over in your portal, you'll see a request to speak button. And so if anyone wishes to ask questions about what it means to proceed or not, feel free to ask your questions now by requesting to speak. All right, well, seeing no questions, let's proceed to voting. And if anyone needs any technical support in voting, you can click the help button in the left-hand side of your town meeting portal to access the support request form or access the help desk numbers. And if you're having trouble voting through the portal, you can enter your vote into the Q and A or call the town clerk at 781-316-3071. And I believe you'll see that appear in either in the chat or the, yeah, I guess you'll see that in the chat. And so if you refresh your portal, if it hasn't refreshed for you, you'll have an option to choose your vote, one for yes, two for no. There's also abstain. I recommend you don't use that. It's not particularly useful. And so if you want to proceed with a meeting remotely, with the virtual town meeting platform that we're using for the remainder of town meeting, you'll press one for yes, if you don't want to proceed virtually and you want to trigger a process that'll have us rethink how to meet not virtually, then you'd press two for no. And let's see. And so do we have a timer on the voting? That we can see? Julie, on your display, I don't see, do you know why there's not a timer? I thought there was usually a timer at the top.
It was, so the minute has passed.
Oh, okay, got it.
I'm sorry, I was having some, I don't know if other people were experiencing a couple of connection issues. So there was a minute or two where it was going down, but it looks like we're okay now.
Okay, I'll leave it open for another 30 seconds just to make sure folks are able to get their vote in.
This is Julie Presell, Town Clerk. I just submitted a couple of verbal votes. So yes.
Great, thank you. Do you know if any other, I mean, I guess you won't know if there's any on their way, but.
231 people have voted.
Just another 10 seconds.
I'm entering another vote.
Okay. Let's just wait a little bit longer then, votes are still coming in. Yeah, I'm seeing 233 votes cast. Sorry. Yeah. Two, two thirty-five. Okay, let's just go another five seconds and we'll close this up. Okay, so let's close voting now.
I'm still taking votes.
Oh, okay. Let's see, the motion passes with eighty-eight point eight percent of the vote. Two hundred and seven in the affirmative, twenty-six in the negative.
Okay.
Okay, we'll just, we'll cycle through the precincts here. Okay. And if, if anyone missed in the cycling through the precincts, if, if anyone missed their precinct and didn't see whether their vote registered, you can always check in the portal. The, on the left-hand side, there is a view votes button. And so you can, and that'll be updated real time as the, the voting is closed on any given article. Okay, so let's now move along to right now recognize the chair of the select board, Leonard Diggins. Mr. Diggins, are you there?
Len, you're muted. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It, it is requested that members of the select board and elected officials of the town, town manager, department heads of the town and staff, superintendent of the schools and staff, committees, commissions and boards of the town, Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical School District Committee and Superintendent, members of the electronic voting committee and staff, members of the general court representing Arlington and also any consultants who have retained, have been retained to work for the town relative to the articles to be acted on by this meeting and representatives of the news media be permitted to sit within the town meeting enclosure.
Madam clerk, do you have reason to believe that this meeting was appropriately called by the select board and that the constable made a return of service on the warrant in accordance with the laws? Madam clerk, are you there?
I, yes, sorry, I lost Zoom, but yes, I declare and sort of.
Thank you.
It is moved that if all the business in the meeting has, has set forth in the warrant and for the annual town meeting is not disposed of at this session, when at the, when the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Wednesday, April 27, 2022 at 8:00 PM.
Great. Thank you. I will now call for any announcements or resolutions. I don't know if we established how to do that in the portal. I don't know if that was covered in the training or rehearsal sessions, but basically early on each night, there'll be an opportunity for announcements and resolutions. So given the impossibility that we're going to cover all 77 articles tonight, there will be plenty of opportunities for folks to offer announcements and resolutions at future meetings of this town meeting. So let's see. Seeing no announcements or resolutions, let's go to article two, the state of the town addressed by the chair of the select board, Mr. Diggins again.
Sure. You know, it just, um, be, I guess, a little bit of a point of order-ish thingy. It's on Ms. Wayman. Raise your hand. Is, is there an issue?
I'm sorry. I was just going to offer if you wanted to turn on the raised hand for people to.
Oh. Oh, yeah, that, that, that's a good idea. Let's do that now, if you don't mind, Mr. Diggins. Let's, uh, let's open up, raise the ability for members to raise hands if they have any announcements or resolutions they'd like to share with the meeting right now. Thank you. Okay, so it appears that we, at least I'm not seeing any raised hands, and at least I think I'm looking in the right place. Can anyone else on the panel confirm that there are no raised hands?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay. Well, seeing none, let's move back again to article two, Mr. Diggins.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And it is with joy and eager anticipation that I say, thank you again. And I have a lot to say, so my tempo is going to be a little quick. You know, first, I, I give thanks and pay my respects to the, to our fellow residents, residents, and especially those who volunteer their time by serving on our nearly 100 boards committees, commissions and, and task groups. Next, I acknowledge all of my fellow town meeting members upon whom our former government rests. I'm especially proud of you and the efforts leading up to this town meeting, but more on that later. To my fellow townwide elected officials, it is impossible to work with you or observe you in action and see the results of your, of your labors without having a profound appreciation for all that you do. When it comes to our state delegates, Trinity Senator Sidney Friedman, Representative Sharon Garbally and Representative Dave Rogers, I can only imagine the greater demands on you and your families. Finally, and most importantly, there is our town staff. They are truly an amazing and wonderful bunch of people led by our town manager, Adam Chapdolane, chief Julie Flaherty of the police department and chief Kevin Kelly of the fire department. They keep our town running as well as keep us safe and protected on a daily basis. So after all of that, is it any surprise that when I think of the state of our town, I am filled with immense pride and aberration? I'm not the type to claim that we are number one or the best, the greatest. In my humble opinion, those judgments are best made by others. That said, Arlington is recognized as a leader by the examples that we set. Case in point, during this roller coaster of a pandemic, our border health led by Christine Bourne-Johno has served us well and by example has led the region and the Commonwealth towards the goal of keeping residents informed and providing us, especially our elderly and our youth, with easily accessible vaccines once they were approved. So let's spend a couple of minutes recalling more of the last 12 months. Arlington celebrated its first Juneteenth day, Juneteenth day. It was the beginning of a new tradition. And in a sense, it complements a much older tradition of celebrating Patriots Day with the recreation, with the recreation of the rise of Paul Revere and William Dawes. We also welcome our new superintendent, Dr. Liz Holman, who has already launched an ambitious strategic planning and vision process for our schools. About two months ago, the first wing of the New Arlington High School opened. It's an elegant space and it shows our delegate, our dedication to our youth and that we value giving out the children of our community a good education. Our town clerk, Julie Bluzell, our DEI director, Julian Harvey and Kelly Lineham, the planning department guided us through the re-presecing process with the goal of helping us to make it more possible for town meeting to become a body that more closely reflects and represents the makeup of our community. Now, even with the challenges posed by the re-presecing process for the first time, I'm very pleased to say that all 21 precincts either work individually or combined with other precincts to conduct spring, spring precinct meetings. And that's despite having less time to organize. And I might add that other than sending out a notice and helping with Zoom accounts here and there, all, and I mean, all the organizing was done by the town meeting members. And I hope that the effort was worth it. And I hope that it provides more evidence of the benefits of connecting with each other and listening to each other. Last year, late last year, the Housing Corporation of Arlington cut the ribbon on its Downing Square and Broadway initiative, which offers 48 units of affordable housing for low to middle income residents. Combine this news with the seating of the board of our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and it shows that we are moving forward towards our goal of making Arlington more affordable for more people. We wrapped up the development of a sustainable transportation plan known as Connect Arlington, along with the development of a Fair Housing Action Plan, a Net Zero Action Plan, and the next iteration of the Housing Production Plan. Of course, any recounting of last year must acknowledge the contributions of the Arlington Commission for Arts and Culture. Two products, projects that come to mind are, one, the time traveling climate crisis messages from students in the future. And two, neighborhood haikus, which sparked my poetic creativity and apparently that of many others here in town. And I have to say, I feel a haiku coming on. Let's turn. Future luck. Opportunities abound. Try till we succeed. So with that, we look ahead. In three days, our new community center, formerly known as the senior center, opens. Since I'm anticipating that it will be my favorite hangout spot in 10 to 15 years, I'm excited about it. This complements the continued rebuilding of a high school and shows our commitments to our senior population as well as our youth. In the category challenges, we have begun the process of searching for a new town manager. No one will replace Mr. Chapdolane, who in his 10 years as town manager and nearly two years as a deputy town manager before that, has helped Arlington not only become a better place for its residents, but it's also made Arlington a leader in the region. You have our deepest gratitude, Adam, and we wish you and your family well. A challenge of different sort will be pulling off our annual town party known as Town Day. If the pandemic and the weather doesn't conspire against us, your select board, along with the guidance of our office staff and a contingent of volunteers, and that includes some of you, though you don't know it yet, it will host Town Day on September 17th. We know that many residents look forward to Town Day and putting smiles on those residents' faces will be worth the effort. Now, what doesn't put a smile on anyone's face is the compound word override. Probably most residents see it as two four-letter words. Indeed it is, but let us also try to approach this inevitability with the notion of it being an opportunity for our community to reassess our values and to act accordingly. Perhaps we conclude that the earlier and the greater the amount that we invest in our future, the greater the payoff we will see and the less it will cost us in the long run. Perhaps we may conclude that we need to hunker down and, and deeply cut spending. As we have our community conversation, let us do so in good faith and respect the thoughts and feelings of others, especially those with whom we disagree. So again, and in closing, when I think about the state of our town, I am filled with a sense of pride and admiration because the state of our town is good and it continues to improve. As I work with and get to know more people in our town, I am increasingly confident that we have a great future ahead of us. And it is our fervent hope that our affection for our town and for each other will also grow and motivate us to contribute more to a success and well-being. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Diggins. So it's been brought to my attention, there are actually two things I've done out of order. And so we're, we're going to skip back to do this properly. When Mr. Dickens requested that members of the select board and elected officials of the town and then enumerated a, a set of individuals to allow them to, let's see, to sit within the town meeting enclosure, this virtual enclosure that we have. I do need a second on that. And actually, Julie, can you clear the, the seconds that we have, just to make sure that we're, we're getting seconds for this motion? Are these new seconds or are these lingering from before? I'm seeing four in there now. Okay.
I was about to clear them.
Okay. Well, I see new names in there, so it's clear that there, there were additional seconds that were just added. So, yep. Okay, so, so we have a second and, and for this, because it's a, a pretty kind of predictable, basic formulaic thing, we're not going to go through having like a full vote for this. Do we have any, can we enable the raise hands feature in Zoom to allow anyone to object to all of these individuals being allowed in the town meeting enclosure? And I'll just repeat it now since, uh, since I missed this earlier. It's requested, this is, this was moved by Mr. Diggins to request that members of the select board and elected officials of the town, town manager, department heads, town superintendent, staff committees, commissions and boards of the town, Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical School District Committee and Superintendent, members of the electronic voting committee and staff, members of the general court representing Arlington, and also any consultants who have been retained to work for the town relative to articles to be acted upon by the meeting and representatives of the news media to be permitted to sit within the town meeting enclosure. And so that's been said, do we have any, now that raising hands is enabled in Zoom, do we have any objections to allowing those folks in the enclosure? Okay, so we have one objection by Susan Weber. Or has that been cleared now? Okay, it appears that we have no objections. And we may as well leave raise hands open because we need to do this again for another second that, that I missed. Apologies for that. And this was Mr. Diggins motion that if he moved that if all business of the meeting is set forth and the warrant for the annual town meeting is not disposed of at this session, when the meeting adjourns, adjourns to Wednesday, April 27, 2022 at 8:00 PM. So do, can you clear the seconds? So we can get a second on that. And apologies to everyone for missing this earlier. Okay, we have new seconds. And if we still have raised hands enabled in Zoom, do we have any, any objections? If anyone has an objection to a unanimous vote, you can raise your hand now in Zoom for adjourning until 8:00 PM this Wednesday, when this meeting ends tonight. Okay, seeing no raised hands and therefore no objections, the vote is unanimous. I declare it. And let's see. And so now we are back to, let's take up article three, reports of committees. Okay, a call for all reports that are ready to be received. Let's see, Mr. Fosca, did you have anything to add to this or shall we just head straight into a vote?
I would move that the recommended votes contained in the respective reports of the finance committee, select board, redevelopment board and other committees before the meeting without further motion.
Second.
Okay. And.
And I move that article three be laid upon the table.
Second.
Okay. And do we have any objections? Is, is the raise hand feature enabled right now? Okay, so if anyone has any objections to receiving all the reports and laying article three upon the table, you can raise your hand now. Seeing no objections. All the reports are received. And now we take up article four, the appointment of the measure of wood and bark. Okay, so do we have any? Okay, so do we have any? Do we have any nominations for the measure of wooden bark?
Just the moderator?
Yes, Mr. Fosca.
Charles Foscat Precinct ten, I move that Mr. John Warden be appointed measure of wooden bark.
Second.
Second, okay, very good. And do we have any objections through use of raised hands in Zoom? Okay, so seeing none, it is a unanimous vote, and Mr. Warden is again the measure of wooden bark. Thank you. Any new members who have questions about that, I'll happily take those questions offline. Thank you. Let's see. And okay, so now, let's take up Article Five, the election of the Assistant Town Moderator. Let's see, we have a point of order, let's actually take that now, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can, go ahead.
Thank you, Carl Wagner, Precinct fifteen. I'm surprised that we're doing elections Soviet-style without votes, even though obviously the measure of wooden bark is a ceremonial vote. Can you explain again why? I'm sorry if I missed that.
Oh, I mean, in this particular case, there was only there was only one candidate that was appointed, and so using my discretion, I figured it wasn't worth the meeting's time to have a full vote consuming a couple of minutes of time to determine the winner, when we could just do a yeah, just do a call for objections with the Assistant Town Moderator. If there are more than one candidate, for instance, then we can put that to a vote, and we'd actually have to vote on that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, of course. Okay, so I'd like to open the floor for any. Once we get the article open, we can open the speaking queue for any nominations for Assistant Town Moderator. So let's use the speaking queue for nominations, and if you have any nomination and endorsement that you'd like to share, feel free to use the speaking queue to click on the Request to Speak button in the portal to do so. And to start things off, we have Mr. Helmuth, let's let's give him an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Eric Helmuth, Precinct twelve, I nominate Adam Oster.
And I believe the Assistant Town Moderator does need to be a town meeting member, and I believe Mr. Oster is a town meeting member, so. Let's say, do we have a second? We have several seconds, okay? So Mr. Oster is our first candidate for Assistant Town Moderator. Anything else, Mr. Helmuth? Hearing nothing, do we have any other nominations that anyone would like to offer? Which you can do so by requesting to speak in your town meeting portal. Okay, seeing none, since we only have one candidate again, so I'll also defer to the raised hand in the, in Zoom to register any objections, so feel free to object, and then we can, if there are any objections, I'll call for a full vote of the committee, of the meeting. Let's see, do we have raised hands opened in Zoom right now? Okay, well, seeing none. Mr. Oster, congratulations on your reelection as Assistant Town Moderator. So let's move on now, before we get to the other articles, there's a couple of things that we're going to do first. First, we're going to present some administrative corrections that were identified, kind of late-breaking, just in the last day or so. So we want to make sure that all town meeting members have the opportunity to mark up your pages or take notes on these corrections, which Madam Clerk, can you speak to whether these corrections are already posted on the annotated warrant online, or is that still in progress?
Julie Brazil Town Clerk, yes, all of these corrections are shown in, shown in Novus Agenda, so if you're looking at Novus Agenda, you are seeing the correct version, the printed things are the only ones that are wrong.
Okay, thank you, so anyone who has their printed material at home, or just wants to take notes, otherwise, I mean, if you're strictly following through the annotated warrant online, then as as Ms. Brazil mentioned, like, that's already been updated, but if you're working from the paper binder, which are the copy of somewhere here, then you might want to take note of these corrections, so. Julie, or the other Julie, our display controller, can you slowly scroll through this so folks can make note of these changes that might not be reflected in their printed copies if they have them?
Yes, and also, Mr. Moderator, Town Clerk Doug Heim is raising his hand.
Oh. Mr. Heim, go ahead.
Good evening, Members of Town Meeting, Doug Heim, Town Council, thank you very much for your time, it's a pleasure to be with you tonight. I just want to walk through these quickly, so they're as straightforward as they can be. The first administrative correction, you'll see, you actually got a handout on this earlier last week. It essentially is not so much an error in the actual vote that was approved by the Select Board or typo, it's sections of Article twelve that were inadvertently cut off in the Select Board report that basically went to print. These are essentially sections five, six, seven, they provide for exemptions to the water bottle prohibition under emergencies, an effective date, and a severability clause. The second fix, if you will, Article sixteen, on page thirty-two, there should be redundant sub-paragraphs that should be eliminated. You'll basically see that there's sub-paragraphs, A, B, C, D, and then it goes a restatement of another A, that A should be stricken, so you should see go from A, B, C, D to E. A keen of sight town meeting member also spotted a different error under Article sixteen that I'll just read aloud right now, on page thirty-two, subsection D, Resident Users Phase Out. It should read, as of March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, not as of March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-six, all use of gas-powered leaf blowers by residents shall be corrected. So again, the town clerk was generous enough to update these votes in the annotated town warrant online, but if you're keeping track by paper, on page thirty-two, in addition to the portion that gets stricken, that unnecessary secondary A, it should also read under section D, right preceding it immediately, as of March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, not March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-six. Article eighteen also has a small number of what are essentially typos. The word victular, for those of you who know what a common victular license is, was spelled incorrectly. The word recommend should have been recommended, that's on page thirty-seven. And then finally, I'm sorry, and in the last two where there's a auto numbering fiasco where subsection C should be, I'm sorry, sub-paragraph C should be a sub-paragraph E. It's fairly obvious to anybody looking at the document that it's just misnumbered, but that C should read E. And then finally, there were some confusion about what the amount of the fine was that the Select Board approved. It should be one hundred dollars across the board, it should not be fifty dollars for the first offense. This is on page thirty-eight, section six, fees and penalties for noncompliance with the rodenticide article that is going to be discussed later. There's also a minor correction, section six severability should be section seven, I apologize for these these typos and a couple of different renumberings that that unfortunately got a little bit mixed up during some iterations of these votes. But again, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to go over them, but all of them except for the one that I noted about the date have been listed in this document, and the town clerk has been kind enough to make sure that they're correct with respect to all of these administrative changes on the annotated town. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, thank you, Members of Town.
Thank you, Mr. Heim. Let's see. I guess, just brief, I don't want to take too much time doing this, but if anyone, I do want to take at least a couple of minutes, give an opportunity for folks who have any questions about those corrections, a chance to speak. So feel free to use the Request to Speak button, well, I guess this is under, well, do we need to change the, because we're currently still on Article Five, which was the last article we had? Or is it easier for you just to allow people to raise hands, since we don't actually have an article before us? So the portal's not really synchronized to where we're at. But we could, I guess we could still use the Request to Speak button, if anyone wants, has any questions that they'd like to ask about these corrections. Mr. Jameson? Actually, before, okay, why don't we take Mr. Jameson, and then we can take the point of order?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Gordon Jameson, Precinct twelve, while we're doing corrections, I just want to reiterate the message that you sent earlier that I made a huge error in my annotated consent agenda on Article eighteen, and that's been changed from encourage the use of roticides to phase out the roticides, and I apologize to Ms. Crowder and her associates who worked so hard on getting that article placed before us, my sincere apologies. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Great, yeah, and thanks for having that summary of the consent agenda, and thanks for making that correction that Ms. Crowder noticed, and apologies that I didn't catch that either. Thank you, Mr. Jameson, let's take Ms. Mazina's point of order.
Yeah. Hello, Mr. Moderator, can you hear me okay?
Yes, name and precinct, please.
Yes, Angel Mazina, Precinct fifteen. Just wanted to confirm, first, we're discussing Article five or Article six, the screen, I think, is still referring back to the Assistant Town Moderator election?
Yeah, that's right, so that's just an oddity of the fact that what we're discussing right now is not actually listed in our list of articles. And so to save us time, we could create an article just for talking about the administrative corrections, but this was a late addition to our agenda, and so it's just easier to use the Request to Speak button in the context of Article Five, which was the last article that we were discussing, and so Article Five is already done with, we're just reusing it here to allow folks an opportunity to speak, so I apologize for the confusion in the user interface about that, which is inconsistent.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate that, Mr. Moderator, just a follow-up question then on articles that will come up later on, if they had administrative corrections, if there have been any amendments proposed by town meeting members, although I understand that cannot be the forum to do it this way here, but if there have been amendments proposed, will we know about them, will we see them or not?
Right, so amendments, I believe that we, someone, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that we're sending those out through the town meeting member email list, and so anyone, so all town meeting members hopefully are subscribed to that list already, and they should be receiving updates about amendments. There's various amendments that are, some that have been kind of approved and are listed on the online annotated warrants, others are still kind of pending, where, you know, consulting with town council, or I'm still in the midst of making a decision about whether it's in scope, and so some of those are still in process. And so those should go, when those do, when the, if or when those get finalized, those will be announced through the town meeting member email list, and they'll be also attached to the kind of related material in Novus Agenda for an article within the online annotated warrant as well. So we'll be announcing it and also posting it to the annotated warrant.
Thank you for clarifying.
Great, thank you. Okay, so let's clear Ms. Mazina's point of order, and that's all we have with the administrative corrections, there's, I mean, I'm just accepting these corrections administratively, so there's nothing for us to move or vote on. So let's move on now to the consent agenda. And as Julie W., our display controller, is bringing that up, I'll just summarize what the consent agenda is, I sent out some communications ahead of time about this, so hopefully it doesn't come as any surprise. Consent agenda is just a way of kind of batching up articles, which through consultation with, you know, committee chairs and other folks and town council, I've decided are not particularly controversial and probably don't warrant any discussion. But, and so it allows us to kind of skip debate on a large swath of articles. That doesn't mean that they're unimportant, it just means that there's unlikely, in my estimation, to be any real debate on it, and so we have an opportunity now for town meeting members to hold, which means like to remove, to request to remove articles from the consent agenda. So we have a point of order from Mr. Leon.
Well, Mr. Moderator, John Leoni, Precinct eight.
Hi, Mr. Moderator.
Quite all right. I'm gonna request that you do not use the procedure of having two people remove an item from the consent agenda. When I initiated the consent agenda several years ago, it was upon the belief that if one town meeting member wished to discuss an item or an article, you know, had a question about the article, that it would be freely available to remove that article by simply putting a hold on it. By requiring a second town meeting member to vote to remove it from the consent agenda, you're essentially moving the right of that other town meeting member to ask their questions, or perhaps to change people's mind about an article which they feel passionately about. So I'm gonna, as the moderator who introduced the consent agenda, and knowing how the consent agenda is handled in other communities throughout the Commonwealth, I'm gonna ask that you reconsider that point of order. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, and and that was an excellent example of a textbook case or usage of point of order, so thank you, Mr. Leoni. So where I stand on that, and I take your point, and I appreciate it, where I stand on this is that consent agendas throughout the Commonwealth follow a broad range of thresholds for holding articles from the consent agenda so that they're debated and voted upon individually, as opposed to part of the batch of articles in the consent agenda, and in some cases, a majority vote is used to remove it from the consent agenda, which I feel is onerously high. I've talked to some folks about, there was a suggestion that someone offered of like, well, maybe five votes, because five people standing when we're meeting in person, before we had electronic clickers, would be the threshold for uh, five people standing when we're meeting in person before we had electronic clickers would be the threshold for doing uh a a standing vote. Um, and uh, and so I kind of weighed these different options. What I settled on was, well, a a single voter to hold from the consent agenda felt like it was too low to me and the a threshold of majority vote of town meeting seemed just really too high. And so I settled on two was like the next increment that we could do. Uh, so uh, so I I'm happy to uh can, uh, to stick with uh the two votes, which effectively would be like a a request to hold the or or a request to remove the article from the consent agenda and then a second vote to kind of confirm that. Um, and I feel like if we're not getting a second vote, then there's really not a whole lot to speak to. And folks can feel free to like, even if uh, i- if they don't personally care to remove it from the consent agenda, but feel that someone else should have a right to, they can second that as a confirmation. Um, so people can use their 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 kind of second, their virtual seconding. Um, in whatever manner they 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 see fit. So uh, so I'm uncomfortable. I I appreciate the point. Um, and uh, and and the context uh that Mr. Leoni has provided and uh I'm uh comfortable uh moving forward with a threshold of of two votes, which is still a a very, very low bar in 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 the big picture. So, um, let's see. So we have, uh, so why don't we go through here? The uh, we're, the way that we're gonna do this is different from how we did it in the dress rehearsal last night. Uh, the the approach that we tried last night was uh kind of uh riddled with problems. And so uh, we actually got a software change uh, thanks to some quick work uh by the developer of the virtual town meeting portal uh to allow us to do this uh in hopefully a more uh clear way than than we that we did last night. That said, this is the first time this is actually being tried. Um, uh, other, other than us kind of testing this uh on a small scale ahead of the meeting. Uh, so I ask for everyone's forbearance uh and like if if things don't go perfectly smoothly, but uh my my belief is that this will go better than it did in the rehearsal due to these software changes that we're gonna try out now. So uh, I ask for everyone's patience and forbearance as we uh uh work through this. Um, the the this new way of doing the consent agenda. Okay, so uh Julie W, uh, can you give like a brief, you got, you did most of like the kind of training and the practice of this. Do you mind giving me a brief overview of of how this is going to work? So I think you 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 understand the details of this better than I do at this point.
Sure, but as you said, we put this together today. So basically, we're going to be pulling up each of the articles that were on uh the majority consent agenda and then the two-thirds consent agenda. Um, and it just gives us a an opportunity for people to be able to um note if they want to take off any of each of the articles that are on either of these agendas. And um, it also will show the people, I know people had concerns about wanting to know who was pulling these articles off. So um, you'll be able to see each of the people for each of the articles. So um, we were starting right at the top with article six. And we'll, we'll take it from there. Any, any more information needed?
I I think that's pretty clear. So and it'll probably become more obvious as we actually get into the procedure. So um, so we're now opening, we're kind of starting, I think, when 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 we click the button here, we'll start the timer. Um, and I'll give um uh, I'll give thirty seconds. I I think that should be plenty and we we can adjust that if that, if that's not working for folks. We'll, we'll try with a thirty-second timer on um anyone who wishes to remove this article from the consent agenda uh can click the uh remove from consent agenda button uh in their portal window. Uh, and we'll see those names coming up as we do it. And so um, I will also pull up my copy of the consent agenda where um, I don't know if it's the title, I'll read the titles as well. Um, so folks know what we're, we're voting on. So why don't we go ahead and start that timer? So if you want to hold article six, meaning you want to remove it from the consent agenda so it can be uh debated and voted on individually, rather than as part of this batch, which will not allow any debate for any articles that remain in the batch, right? We're now fifteen seconds in. Um, and this is, so art, this is article six we're talking about. Uh, bylaw amendment for updating the Human Rights Commission by law. If you want to have debate on that, okay, so we have one, if we get a second vote, and so let's close voting now. We only got one. Um, so that will not be held. And so now I'm work to uh move to article nine. And so let's uh start the timer again. And so actually, let's pause the timer. We have a point of order from Dr. Ward. Uh, so name and precinct, please. Once you get onto the panel.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hi, so Ms. Warden, do you have, if you have two computers side by side, can you, that are both dialed into the meeting, uh, can you mute the computer that you're not speaking into? Turn, or turn, turn the speakers off or on the other computer. Dr. Warden, are you there? Actually, I see she's uh uh, her computer is muted now. Yes, I can hear you. I hear you now. Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Mr. Moderator, can you hear me?
Yes, can, can you hear me?
Mr. Moderator, can you hear me?
Uh, I can hear you, Dr. Warden. Um. Is it, she, she may have muted.
Can you hear me, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me? So can we, uh,
Can you hear me, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
You can hear me. Well, um, I want to ask where the button is to make a second to to make, to vote to second any um removal from the consent agenda. I don't see any button to remove.
That, that, that's right.
Has a second on that.
Right, so let me explain. So there's uh, it's um there, there's a remove from consent agenda button and it's, it's, it's not presented as a second in the portal. Uh, it's just if there, whoever wants to remove an article from the consent agenda can click the removal from consent agenda button. And if there are at least two people who've requested a removal for a given article, then it will remove. Um, and if we don't get to, if there's zero or one request to remove it within the allotted time, then it'll remain on the consent agenda. So there, there's technically no second. It's just a threshold of two votes.
I, I would like to say that I don't think that really is appropriate, since a second is quite different from the original vote. I would like to be able to place seconds to any particular um item. I really missed that opportunity.
Well, the, the from consent agenda button can be used to a second in this context. We just, the the software doesn't have the feature of switching automatically to a seconding button. Uh, so this is the best we could do, given the limitations of the software. Was there anything else that you had, Dr. Warden?
No, thank you, but I find that extremely disappointing, because I, I don't want to answer questions about the particular item that I'm want to second. I think that should be the primary person who who voted to remove it from the consent agenda. Thank you.
Uh, okay, so as I can clarify there, if I understood your, your, your question is um, I will consider, and I should have clarified this earlier, I apologize, that uh later when the, when the article comes up. Um, like i- if an article is removed from the consent agenda, because there's at least two votes to remove it, then when that article comes up, uh, by default, I will call on the first person who registered their request to remove it from the consent agenda when that article comes up in the natural uh order of articles. Um, and in particular, in the case of a uh, an article that has a recommended vote of no action, um, there's really nothing to discuss on that. Uh, and so the, the only uh legitimate in scope uh action that someone can take after they've removed it from the consent agenda is to offer a substitute motion. So if you're the first person who uh who votes in to remove something from the consent agenda, I'll, by default, I'll consider that person, the person who's um gonna be responsible for presenting a on a, on an article that has a recommended vote of no action. Uh, for other articles that have a recommended vote of a favorable action, um, then we'll just, when that article comes up later on, after having been removed from the consent agenda, we'll just go into debate about that. And so that's a slightly different situation, because debate is perfectly, or yeah, uh, there, there's plenty of debate that can be in scope for a favorable action article, which is not the case for a no action article. Um, so I ask that folks be uh uh mindful that if they're removing a a article from the consent agenda and it's an article that has a recommended vote of no action, you really need to be prepared uh for a substitute, to offer a substitute motion for it, so that there's some action for us to take and 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 to debate about. Was, um, I believe, Ms., uh, I believe Dr. Warden is uh is done with her um point of order. Uh, so let's take uh uh Ms. Abiars.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. This is Joe Babiar's precinct fifteen, and I think you've answered my question. This is my first town meeting. Apologies if I don't catch on to things, but is no action different than a down vote? A failure to ask both. And um with that, I will just sign off and await your response. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Uh, that be ours. Uh, no action, every articles that have the recommended vote of no action are very unintuitive. I'll, I'll try to uh explain briefly. Uh, and we can get into this further uh offline, but um a recommended vote of no action is, means that there's nothing to do with it, like we have nothing to do uh to satisfy this article. But we do, we do still have to vote on it, as we do have to vote on all articles. And the cons, the the innovation of the consent agenda is that uh among the kind of non-controversial, against this subjective determination, but among the non-controversial articles, uh, the no action articles are ones that there's really nothing to do for them, other than to vote on them. And whether they're voted up or voted down, um, it kind of doesn't matter. We just have to vote on them. Uh, it's just a weird kind of legal oddity that we need to satisfy as part of our responsibilities at town meeting. Um, and so, uh, when, when we're discussing and i- i- if an article that's recommended vote of no action is removed from the consent agenda and it comes up later on and it's natural kind of sequence, sequential order of articles, um, there's nothing that anyone can say, uh, like, like from the speaker queue that would be in scope for it, because there's nothing to do. Um, uh, but the one, one action that can be taken is for someone to offer a uh a substitute motion so that there is some action to take relative to that article. Um, so voting a no action article up or down kind of doesn't matter. Uh, it just needs to be voted upon. Um, and uh, it requires a substitute motion to turn it into a, a, an article that has some actual uh uh action to be taken as a result. Again, it's, it's very unintuitive. Um, and we're kind of stuck with that, you know, the you know, the, the legal requirements of what time meeting has to do relative to all articles, regardless of whether they have a um, a favorable action that actually does something or a no action that does nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks for the question. Um, uh, going forward though, uh, let, let's, um, we shouldn't be using the point of order for uh for questions unless it's something that folks feel uh that if it isn't addressed, has the uh, the chance of kind of derailing the meeting procedurally. Right? So if it's just about um questions that can be taken up at another time, uh, then that really shouldn't be using the point of order. Um, so I'll, I'll try to be somewhat strict about that going forward. Okay, so we have another point of order, Mr. Jalco. Can we bring him on?
I think I just unmuted myself. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Daniel Jalco, precinct six. I think this rises to the uh standard of point of order only because uh I think it will help to facilitate the perception that this is a fair and and proper process, especially in light of the new standard you introduced to have two people um requesting to pull something. Um, I think it would be useful if it's not already on your mind that if the first request comes close to the end of the thirty-second limit, that you give a few extra seconds for a second request to come in, especially in light of the fact that you suggested people who are um sympathetic with the idea that anybody who wants to remove an item from the uh consent agenda um, that they could just chime in and 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 support that idea in in sort of, you know, the, the, the theory of that idea. Uh, I, I might have missed, I might have misperceived it, but I kind of got the impression on the first issue that, that um, the, the, the first request to pull it came in very close to the thirty seconds and then it was over. So just a bit of feedback in case it helps to um it both make the, the process more fair and to make it appear to be more fair. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, I think going forward, what we can do is have maybe twenty seconds for the first vote to be read, the first request to be registered. And then if, whenever one comes in, uh, like that comes in at five seconds or comes in at nineteen seconds, whenever it comes in, um, we, I, I can then be looking at my watch for like another twenty seconds for, for the second. So it's maybe, maybe, maybe that'll give the uh appearance of more fairness. There's always the issue of uh a vote could come in like a second after uh some time threshold, and that's always gonna be awkward and um a challenge. Uh, but uh, we'll, we'll, we'll see what we can do going forward. Uh, thank you, Mr. Jalco. Uh, Mr. Uh Weinstein has a point of order.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, Jordan Weinstein, precinct twenty-one. Um, I have a, maybe a simpler way to do this. I would suggest, uh, given the variability of uh your description and lead in to each of these uh warrant articles from the consent agenda that you simply uh start your thirty-second voting clock after you finish introducing.
We could do that. I mean, I think um except everyone can see, some of these names are quite a bit longer than others. So, yeah, uh, I'll entertain that uh, that approach. Thank you. Uh, is there anything else, Mr. Weinstein?
No, thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, and Mr. Warden has a point of order.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, no, I've got a, the, the reason, reason we're having all this feedback when Dr. Warden that tries to speak is that my headphones, my, my voices, your voices, everybody's voices come through my computer, not through my headphones, and the headphones are plugged in. Is there some way you can activate the headphones from your end? Because we, all that squawking noises is not very pleasant for anybody, but I don't know what to do about it. It didn't, never happened last year.
Right, so that, that's, I, I don't believe that's something that we can remotely enable. Um, but uh perhaps we can get someone from tech support uh on the phone with you to try to work through that um from your end. Is that, is that a possibility?
Well, yeah, well, yeah, uh, but I, you know, I, I it, it, again, it, it ma- makes it hard to participate if, if you're jumping back and forth and turning off the volume and so on. It's another downside of the virtual meeting, I might say. But yeah, if somebody wants to call me, yeah, go ahead. I, I'm glad to, I'm glad to get any help I can get.
Okay, great. Well, I, I, I'll, I'll see if we can, um, uh, let's see, can someone, like I see in the Zoom panel, kind of give me some indication that uh we have someone who can follow up with Mr. Warden? Okay, we, we can. We'll, we'll have someone contact you. Anything else, Mr. Warden? Okay, I, I think, uh, Mr. Warden, do you have, do you have anything further?
Uh, no, no, it's just, uh, you know, I, I, I'd like to be able to fully participate and it's hard to do when I, when, when, both, both, both of us can't hear at the same time.
Right. And so it's how we'll, we'll do. Well, I mean, it's, we're already at the nine thirty mark and following, um, kind of past practice. Why don't, I'll take the next point of order that we have, uh, from Mr. High, uh, Ms. Hyam, and we um, will take a recess after that for, uh, uh, for ten minutes and hopefully that'll give some time for, uh, for any, any issues to be resolved and for folks to take a break at the halfway point of the meeting tonight. Okay?
I will await, await the call.
Great, thank you. Okay, uh, let's, let's take Ms. Hyam's point of order and then we'll go into, uh, a ten minute recess after that.
Liba Hyam, whoops. Liba Hyam, precinct fifteen. Um, you addressed my first point of order, which was, um, that it was break time. But my second point of order is, um, that I believe that you've proposed a good alternative, given how inefficient last week's pulled agenda items were when there were no substitute motions or even speaking to put forward. And I would like to see our town body actually address the method you've proposed before we try changing it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so let's take a, uh, a ten minute break at this point. We'll come back at, uh, at nine forty-five and we'll resume from there. At the end of our, uh, intermission, so let's, uh, start coming back. Give folks a minute to kind of get situated back in. Okay, so I believe we were, uh, yeah, we're on article nine of the consent agenda. Um, let's see, uh, Ms. Brazil, do you, do you have, uh, do you recall if we, uh, had already voted on whether to hold article nine or not? Or Ms. Wayman as well?
Uh, I'd have no notes that we finished, uh, with article nine, so
Okay.
I, I think those two names are with, associated with article nine.
Okay, great. So, uh, I don't, I don't think we opened the voting yet, but I believe like those, um, yeah, so, so we already have the two votes required to hold it from the consent agenda and we'll take note of Mr. Warden, um, and so Mr. Warden, um, so please be prepared to offer a substitute motion when, uh, when article nine comes up. And obviously, if Mr. Warden and Mr. Wagner want to coordinate, uh, on on that, feel free to do so. Any, anyone else can feel free to coordinate with Mr. Warden and Mr. Wagner, uh, if they're interested as well in, in kind of drafting a substitute motion, um, for this no action article. Thank you. So let's, uh, so why don't we, um, open up consideration of article eleven? On the consent agenda. And this is, and I'll, I'll make note going forward. Uh, there were some comments about this, of whether the article has a recommended vote of favorable action or no action, since there's kind of, uh, different, um, uh, responsibilities that folks have if they're trying to hold one versus the other. Okay, so this is, before we start the timer, this is a bylaw amendment related to domestic partnerships. Um, so while we haven't even started the timer yet, uh, but we already have, uh, two requests to hold it, so it'll be held. So we're done with article eleven. Well, we're, we're, we're done removing it from the consent agenda, but it'll come up later. Uh, next is article fourteen. And this, uh, would establish, uh, well, it's an article that would establish a committee on insurance costs and issues, but its rank, recommended vote is no action. So, uh, anyone seeking to hold this, uh, you'll, you will be called on to, uh, offer a substitute motion if this is, is pulled from the consent agenda. So let's start the, the timer on this and we'll try, we have twenty seconds for a first uh, request to remove it from the consent agenda. And if there is, so we have one. Um, and so now it will go to thirty seconds, because that's twenty seconds from, and now we have a couple others. So, uh, so Mr. Warden, so we can pause the timer here, um, and Mr. Warden, Mr. Tremblay and Dr. Warden um, requesting to hold it. Uh, so we've reached the two vote threshold. And so I'll look to, uh, Mr. Warden, uh, to offer a substitute motion when that comes up, um, in the natural order of articles. Okay, so let's, uh, let's say, that was fourteen, let's now move on to article eighteen on the consent agenda. This is a favorable action article. And before we start the timer, this is, uh, uh, by law amendment to phase out certain toxic rodenticides on public and private property with reporting requirement and, uh, public education. And this is favorable action. And so when we start the timer on this, we'll give twenty seconds for a first request to pull it and uh, and think, and, and then we'll wait another, if there is a first, then we'll wait twenty seconds for a second. So now, yeah, five seconds left to try to pull this from the consent agenda so that it's debated and voted on separately. Okay, so time's expired and so it'll remain on the consent agenda. So now we're moving on to article nineteen. Uh, which is a recommended vote of no action. Um, the original scope of the article was to, um, I believe to rename a street to, uh, I'm not sure if I'm getting this pronunciation right. Someone can correct me. Is it Magliosi Boulevard or Mallozzi Boulevard? And again, this is, uh, so we have, uh, Mr. Schlickman has, uh, and we have multiple others, so. So I'll look to Mr. Schlickman at the time, uh, to present a substitute motion when article nineteen comes up. It, it's, it's now hereby removed from the consent agenda. And so when it comes up in the national order, order of articles, I'll look for a, uh, a substitute motion. Thank you. Uh, so now we're going to article twenty. The description of this is code enforcement, which is not very descriptive. So I'll pull up a little bit more detail before we get started. Does not come up in the, uh, in the interactive warrant or the, the annotated warrant for some reason. All right. But in any event, we have, uh, two votes to remove it from the consent agenda, uh, before we've even started the timer. So it's reached the threshold and it'll be removed. And so this is a no action article. So I'll be looking to Mr. Schlickman for, uh, a substitute motion when that article comes up. Article twenty-one is next. This is also a no action article. The original scope of the article was extension of the youth and young adult advisory board commission or committee study group, uh, and my understanding is that it's no action because that extension of time was not necessary. So there's, there's nothing to do here, um, currently. And so, so when we start the timer on this and I give folks twenty seconds to request to remove it from the consent agenda. Uh, remember this is a no action, so you would have to offer a substitute motion. In this case, you could offer to keep the extension in place, but, uh, uh, I believe no one on that committee nor the select board is interested in an extension, so that twenty seconds is expired. So, uh, that is now remaining on the consent agenda. And so next up we have article twenty-two. This is also a no action article. The original scope of the article is the establishment of a town committee to examine budgetary impact of overnight parking. Uh, the recommended vote is no action and, um, so let's start the timer on that. Uh, anyone who is interested in holding this from the consent agenda or removing it from the consent, consent agenda would have to offer a substitute motion. So we have something to actually, uh, debate, uh, later. Let's see, have five seconds left to request that this be removed if you have a substitute motion in mind and seeing none and twenty seconds is expired, so that will remain on the consent agenda. We'll now move to article twenty-three. This is, uh, Board of Youth Services Updates, which is also recommended vote of no action. So when we start the timer on this and fifteen seconds left. Ten seconds, if you want to offer a substitute motion, you want to hold this from the consent agenda, you have five seconds. It is going, it's going, and it's gone in that it's staying on the consent agenda. Um, next up we have article twenty-five. This is a favorable action. Uh, so if you want to debate, so this does not require a substitute motion, uh, it just gets pulled from the consent agenda. Uh, this is home rule legislation for early voting for town elections. And so anyone who wishes to debate this and vote on it separately from the consent agenda, uh, feel free to push the remove from consent agenda button, button. Let's start the, uh, the timer on this. I'll give twenty seconds for the first vote, if there's any. Fifteen seconds left. Ten seconds. If you want to hold this from the consent agenda to discuss it later, five seconds. Okay, so we'll go to, uh, we'll go to thirty-seven seconds on the timer for anyone who wants to effectively second. I'm sorry, that was a point of order, not a, uh, so let's pause the timer here. Sorry, I misread the point of order as, uh, uh, removal from the consent agenda. Apologies for that. Uh, so let's take Mr. DeTulio's point of order.
Can, can you hear me, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, I can. Name it precinct.
Uh, James DeTulio, precinct twelve. Um, I raise a point of order simply because, uh, although I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to this particular item for reasons that I've discussed with town council related to, um, general law, chapter two sixty-eight, a chapter twenty-three, B three. There are certain reasons why in order to dispel the appearance of a conflict of interest, I would not want to, uh, participate in this vote. Uh, but it has nothing to do with me submitting a substitute motion, so I, in order not to uh, have to withdraw or, or request to be withdrawn from the consent agenda and force everyone to have to go through a vote simply on my account. Uh, I would just simply ask that, uh, when the vote is recorded on this, uh, uh, consent agenda item, that for the record, I'd be listed as not participating in the vote. So I have, I have discussed this with town council and he can, he can give further detail if necessary.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Heim, uh, can, can you clarify the legal, um, kind of perspective on this and? Because let me just say first, my, my understanding is that the, uh, the, the vote that we take on the the batch or the tranche of articles that remain on the, when, when we finally get through the list, when we take that vote, all those votes basically, like, if, if, if the consent agenda is uh, has an affirmative vote at the end, like a single affirm, like the, the affirmative vote by the body at the end, that um, all of the recommended votes essentially, uh, from the reporting boards and committees uh, are recorded for the individual articles, right? So favorable action is, is becomes favorable action and, and so on. And no action is still no action.
Well, uh, Mr. Moderator, I, I might interject, it may be irrelevant, it may be a moot point at this point, I guess, given that three people have indicated they want to remove it from the consent agenda, so I don't want to waste anyone's time. If it, if it's being removed from the consent agenda, then it's essentially mooted by my issue.
Sure. Okay, understood. So, uh, I, I will follow up with Mr. Heim just to understand procedurally how the, how that should work. Thank you. Uh, so article twenty-five is removed from the consent agenda with, uh, three votes, and this is a favorable action, so no substitute required. So let's, uh, move on to article twenty-seven. Uh, revolving funds, and this is a favorable action. Okay, and we have a point of order by Mr. Tasty. Let's take his point of order.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Alan Tasty from precinct seventeen. Uh, on the last one, article twenty-five, no one had, uh, moved to remove it from the consent agenda at the, uh, twenty-second point. Uh, so it should still be on the consent agenda.
Uh, let's see, the one before twenty-seven, you're talking about twenty-five? Uh, so, well, we had three, uh, three votes to, uh, remove it from the consent agenda before we even started the timer.
Now, you had already gone through the timer, you hit the twenty seconds, you thought somebody had done it, but it was a point of order. Nobody had moved it to take it from the consent agenda at that twenty-second timeframe.
I see what you're saying. Um, so let's
Uh, oh, obviously, it's, it's your call, but thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
And thank, thanks for pointing that out, Mr. Tasty. Uh, let's, um, that it, yeah, I, I was gonna say, I was thinking that the timer was, uh, was at zero, but we already had some time expired, right? And then the, the point of order interrupted that. Is that right? And so, um, just for clarity, why don't we, uh, redo the vote on, uh, or the requests, uh, on article twenty-five? Can we bring that back up? Like, in the record, we'll have multiple, uh, votes registered for this and, um, and so we'll, we'll take the, the later one in this case. Okay, so let's clear the votes out and reset this. Okay, so this is the home rule legislation again, article twenty-five. This is favorable action, um, related to early voting for town elections. So let's start the timer on this, and we have one request at one second to remove from the consent agenda, so that gives us until twenty-one seconds on the timer for a second, and we got that. Great. So it is now removed from the consent agenda. And so let's move on to article twenty-seven, the result revolving funds. Okay, and this is favorable action, so a substitute's not required. And so if you want to discuss revolving funds, uh, when this article comes up, uh, let, let, you can take it off, let's see, so it's start, let's start the timer now. Uh, okay, so we have Mr. Warden at time zero, so we'll go until twenty seconds on the timer to see if we get a second vote. And we now have a second vote, so revolving funds is now off the consent agenda. And let's, uh, let's move up to article forty-six. Oh, so note that, um, that's forty-five. Um, so I think what's happening here is maybe they're in order of article number, but there's two batches of consent agenda votes, and I was going to go through the majority ones first. So the next majority, uh, article, majority vote article that I have on the consent agenda is forty-six. The, uh, appropriation of the PEG access budget. Okay, and so Okay, and so this is a favorable action, so start the timer. Anyone who wants to remove this to discuss this and vote on it separately from consent agenda, feel free to. Click the remove consent agenda button. Around ten seconds left. Five seconds left. And time has expired, and so that remains on the consent agenda. Before we move to forty seven. There was a request for the, and I know that. I, since we can retake the votes. On these, because we had different, we're following a different procedure really for the first one, the article six. And someone to point out that Mr. Mr. Tremblay had. Registered his, his removal request like right, right before the time expired. And that's not how we handle the other, so for the sake of kind of parody in how we're handling these, why don't we, can we circle back to article six? And we'll retake that vote, so that we have some uniformity here and how we're applying the rules to all these articles. Okay, thank you. And so this is circling back down to article six, this is from the beginning of the consent agenda list. This is a bylaw amendment, updating the Human Rights Commission bylaw, and this is a favorable action. So let's, let's start the timer on this and we'll retake this vote, this consideration of this article. With respect to the consent agenda, so fifteen seconds, I know Mr. Tremblay had. Registered a request, and there he is, so now let's go to thirty one seconds, giving him additional twenty seconds for someone to add a second vote. To remove this from the consent agenda, this is a favorable action, so no substitute motion is required. And we have a second vote from Carl Weidner, and so very good, so let's pause that, and that'll be removed now from the consent agenda. Thank you. And apologies for the inconsistency we initially had, hope that it corrects things. And, okay, so going forward again, I believe the next one that we have. After we did the forty six with forty seven endorsement of parking benefit district expenditures, and this is also a favorable action. And so, so let's start the timer on this, and again, since it's a favorable action, there's no substitute motion required. Anyone who wants to discuss this and vote on it separately from the consent agenda. Feel free to click the remove from consent agenda button, you have five seconds left to do so. To get that first vote registered. And seeing none, it remains on the consent agenda. So let's move now to article fifty two. This is amendments to the fiscal year twenty twenty two budgets. And this is a recommended vote of no action, so this, if someone is interested in pulling this from the consent agenda, it will require a substitute motion. So let's start the timer on this. Okay, so. Article fifty two amendments to the FY twenty twenty two budgets, it's a no action. If you want to, if you want a substitute motion, it's hard for me to imagine what it would be, but people can be creative, you have five seconds left. Two seconds, and it remains on the consent agenda. So let's move now to article fifty six. This is a recommended vote of no action. Also from the Finance Committee report, this is appropriations for committees and commissions, did I say? This is not no action, this is, this is a favorable action. Favorite action on article fifty six, so we have a point of order from Ms. Bloom, let's take that.
Nancy Bloom, precinct eighteen. I'm looking at the FinCom report, it looks like the financial committee is going to be discussing article fifty two. As special town meeting.
I believe Mr. Foscat can weigh on, I believe that the article on the special town meeting will supersede. Article fifty two from the annual town meeting, Mr. Foscat, can you clarify that or confirm that?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Charles Foscat, precinct ten, chairman of finance committee. The, this action puts money back into the override stabilization fund that the town needs in fiscal year twenty three. The problem is that the. The, the annual town meeting is normally not certified by the Department of Revenue and the Attorney General until after June thirtieth. And if that's the case, this money cannot go back into the override stabilization fund, it goes into. The cash, it's not available until another year, but by doing it at the special town meeting, it's available, so that's why. It was moved to the special town meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Great, thank you, and yes, my understanding is that basically the original article fifty six on the annual town meeting is effectively nullified. And superseded by the other article in the special town meeting, so, so it's. Let's go another ten, since we had the point of order, which kind of, and we didn't pause the timer there, let's just go another fifteen seconds. For any folks to pull this and. Okay, and so we'll consider that remaining on the consent agenda. Article fifty seven is next, this is appropriation for town celebrations and events, it's a favorable action. And so no substitute motion is required here, if you just want to discuss this appropriation. It can be removed from the consent agenda, let's start the timer now. So go for twenty seconds, another fifteen seconds, any requests, we have one. Request at, I believe it was at nine seconds, so we'll go to twenty nine seconds for any kind of second request to remove it from the second. Consent agenda. Okay, and we have those, so. Again, this is favorable action, so there's no substitute required, we'll just debate and vote on this separately. Outside of the consent agenda. Let's say, that next is article fifty eight. And this is also a favorable action appropriation, this is miscellaneous appropriation, so if anyone wants to discuss. Have discussion, debate and vote separately on the miscellaneous appropriations. You can remove it from the consent agenda now, let's start the timer for twenty seconds for the first request. And we have ten seconds left. Five seconds. And time's expired, so article fifty eight will remain on the consent agenda. Article fifty nine. Appropriation Transportation Infrastructure Fund, this is also favorable action. And so no substitute motion is required for this, if you want to debate and vote on this separately, let's start the timer. Twenty seconds. We'll wait twenty seconds for the, if there's a first request to remove it from the consent agenda, fifteen seconds left. Ten seconds left for that first request, if there is one. Five seconds. And time has expired, so article fifty nine will remain on the consent agenda. Let's say, next up is article sixty appropriation for blue bikes, this is also a favorable action. So start the timer here, so. This is a favorable action, there's no substitute motion required, if you want to take this off the consent agenda and discuss. And separately vote on the appropriation for blue bikes, and we already have four, and so that was quick, that's, so that is. Now removed from the consent agenda. Next up is article sixty one. Appropriation for water bodies fund, it's also a favorable action. And so fifteen seconds left for anyone who wants to remove this from the consent agenda, ten seconds left. Five seconds. And it's remaining on the consent agenda, okay, next up is article sixty three. Appropriations for the Harry Barber Community Service Program. And this is a no action. So if you want to hold this, be prepared for a substitute motion, so let's start the timer. About twenty seconds away for anyone who's interested in. Substituting or introducing a substitute motion for this, ten seconds left. Five seconds. And time has expired, so article sixty three will remain on the consent agenda, it's booked article sixty four appropriation. For pension adjustment for former twenty five year accidental disability employees. This is a favorable action, so if you want to remove it from the consent agenda, there's no substitute motion required.
Greg, I have this on the consent agenda.
Ah, okay. So. Do you know how long it would take to add that to the consent agenda?
All right, let's try.
I mean, we could buy you time if we circled back to it, or is it kind of, I mean, not really gonna be helpful, because you have to juggle windows anyway.
I think I can just write, actually.
Yeah, and there's a certain naming convention that were, like, it has to start with consent, I believe, to be considered to trigger that new user interface. Yeah, I think it's consent dash and then like the article number. Yeah, article sixty four, I can paste this in the.
No action or favorable?
It is a favorable action. And I can chat you the. The title of the article, you can just take some prefix of that, it's kind of long.
Okay.
And so, yeah, these are all majority vote. Particles, so this, again, this is article sixty four preparation for. For the pension adjustment for former twenty five year and accidental disability employees, this is a favorable action. Start the timer, so twenty seconds if you want to separately like debate and vote on this. Separate from the consent agenda, so you know. Ten seconds for the first request to remove it, if there's any. Five seconds. And time has expired, so that'll remain on, article sixty four will remain on the consent agenda. Article sixty five is next appropriation for design standards, this is a favorable action.
I don't have that on there either.
Oh, it's, that's just the regular, okay. Yeah, I wonder if some of this got truncated somewhere. I wonder if that's gonna be the case for all of these, can you spot check if, let's look at, is like article seventy, does that have a consent?
Sixty six, sixty seven, sixty eight. Sixty nine, seventy.
Okay, so it was. Just, it looks like it was just sixty four and sixty five then. Okay, so do you mind adding one for sixty five? And I'll chat you the names, and this is, this is a favorable action. Okay, great, so article sixty five favorable action appropriation, design standards, right? And so start the timer on this, and so if anyone is interested in, because it's favorable action, does not require a substitute motion. And we already got two requests to remove it, okay, so it is so removed from the consent agenda. So let's close that and go to article sixty six. This is, this is a no action article, the original article scope is local option taxes. And again, this is no action, so we can start the timer. And so if anyone's interested in introducing a substitute motion for this. So that we can speak to it, feel free to remove it from the consent agenda, otherwise if you don't plan to have a substitute motion. I recommend that you leave it on the consent agenda, because there's nothing to discuss about it. And twenty seconds is expired, and seeing no requests, it'll remain on the consent agenda, we'll move on to sixty seven. This is an appropriation. Related to other post-employment benefits, OPEB trust fund. And this is a favorable action, and so let's start the timer on this, anyone who wants to. Discuss, debate, separately vote on this article, you can remove it from the consent agenda now, you still have two seconds for the first request to take it off. Now five seconds left. And it will remain on the consent agenda with time expiring, okay, so moving on to article sixty eight, we only have three left on the majority consent agenda. The majority portion of the consent agenda. So this is article sixty eight, it is a favorable action, transfer of funds related to cemetery. So let's start the timer on this, twenty seconds. For the first vote to be registered for, to remove it from the consent agenda. Ten seconds left. Five seconds, last chance. And time's expired, so let's, so that will be removed, that'll remain on the consent agenda, so move now to article sixty nine appropriation. Related to overlay reserve, and this is also a favorable action. So no substitute motion is required for this, if you want to remove it, start the timer, twenty, we'll go to twenty seconds. Waiting for the first request, if there is one to remove it from the consent agenda. Ten seconds left for a first request. Five seconds. And time has expired, so it will remain on the consent agenda, and the last article on the majority portion. Majority vote portion of the consent agenda is the article seventy appropriation related to long-term stabilization fund. And that is a favorable action, so no substitute motions required, if you want to discuss this, so start the timer. You have twenty seconds. Fifteen seconds for the first request, if there's gonna be one to remove it from the consent agenda, ten seconds left. Five seconds. And time is expired, so it'll, article seventy will remain on the consent agenda. So it is ten twenty two right now, and so I'm gonna go ahead, let's. Open voting on the majority portion of the consent agenda. Alternatively, we could have run through the two thirds vote consent agenda, but I'm pretty sure folks probably use a change of pace at this point. To do something that feels more actionable, so we'll actually vote on this tranche of articles that remain on the consent agenda. Miss Brazil, can you, do you? Ms. Brazil, can you, do you have a list of articles? Then like, I don't have that in my view of what's actually remaining on the consent agenda. Is it possible to maybe share something with with our display controller? So folks can actually see what's on there.
Um, yeah, my notes are, my notes are not that organized. Um, let me see. Yeah, let me see what I can do.
Okay. Yeah, sorry. We didn't plan for showing that. I just figured that we probably want to show something so folks can see what we're voting on since we've removed a bunch of articles from the list. Apologies that I didn't have something prepared for us to to view. In the meantime, Julie W can maybe can bring up the the vote on that, on the consent of the majority portion of the consent agenda. And this is not debatable. If it were debatable, they would kind of defeat the purpose of having a consent agenda, which is to avoid debate. And says so there. So before we enable voting, let's see if there's something we can show here. Actually, if it's easier, maybe. If there's Julie B, if there if there's a list of article numbers that you have that were held or a list of article numbers conversely that were that remain on the consent agenda, if you're able to give those to me, I can throw something together really quick here, unless you already have something in the works.
I'm about to send you a list.
Okay, great. And we have a point of order. So let's take that from Ms. Friedman.
Um, Mr. Moderator, this is Beth Ann Friedman, Precinct 15. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I was going to request that you just go by the numbers and tell us which ones either remain on the consent agenda or which ones were taken off because I lost count somewhere along the way.
Yeah, yep.
Well, I appreciate that you're in the process of doing that.
I think to get the actual this, the the list of article numbers, right, is what you're referring to.
That'd be great. If you can give them orally instead of having us try to read them while we're voting, that would be
Yeah, yeah.
For me.
Yep.
I thank you very much.
Right, thank you. Okay, so I can do this really quick. Let's say. Okay, I have a list here, but I'm trying to figure out if these the holds or the remaining. What was just?
Those are on remaining on the consent agenda.
Okay, so that list I'm seeing of 18, 21, 22, that remains.
Yes, they remain on the consent agenda.
Got it. Okay, 18 apologies. This is taking this long, 22, 23, 40, I'll read them as I go. So we got 18 is the ones remaining on the consent agenda. Everything else has been removed from the majority portion of the consent.
I see a mistake. I don't think, um, oh, no. Yeah, that the list is correct. Yep.
Okay, great.
Yep.
And thanks to Mr. Jamison for providing that for us. Okay, so I'll go through the numbers. So these are the numbers and Julie W, if you want to, if you're able to present, I know we try to avoid having side by side things that you're presenting, the spreadsheet that I have with the majority consent agenda sheet in it. That I'll have the information in there. So folks can see that. Getting this in now. Apologies for the wait here. So the articles remaining on the consent agenda are 18, 21, 22, 23, 46, 47, 52, 56, 58, 59, 61, 63, 64, 66, 67, 68, 69, and 70. So let's see. All right, so Julie W, I just want to kind of slowly kind of scroll through those again from the top.
Yep.
So if you see a Y in column E, that's the remaining on consent agenda column. Those are the articles that are remaining on the consent agenda. So that's what we're going to be voting on next is whether to kind of carry forward the recommended votes of of those articles. Okay. So hopefully that's sufficient. We have a point of order from Mr. Jameson.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Gordon Jameson, Precinct 12. For people who just want to look at the numbers, I posted those numbers in the Q and A. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Are folks able to see that in the Q and A? Or is there someone from the panel who can post those as well so that they're available to the attendees who are not on the panel?
They should be in the Q and A.
Okay. And so I'm seeing in the, in our chat here that that we had, we Mr. Harrelson has questioned Article 19. Still being on the consent agenda. 19. Yeah, if anyone has any, if anyone thinks that we're in error about these, the articles that are remaining or not remaining on the consent agenda, feel free to raise a point of order so we can clarify. This result, can you confirm whether Article 19 should remain on the consent agenda or not?
Yes, Julie Brazil Town Clerk, that was held by Mr. Schlichtman and seconded by Mr. Kaplan.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So I think we're all set here with, so let's, let's go to voting now. And this would be the majority portion of the consent agenda.
Please let us finish this fucking consent agenda.
Not sure who that was, but let's keep things civil and polite here. Okay, so voting is now open. So in your portal, press one for yes, two for no, one yes being that you approve of the recommended votes, whether they're favorable action on an article or no action on an article. If you approve of the recommended votes on the articles that remain on the consent agenda, press one. If you don't want that and you reject the articles in the consent agenda, their recommended votes. If you reject the recommended votes, you can press no, and that that'll reject the entirety of them. So no is kind of an awkward thing to do here procedurally. So okay, so how are we doing? So our time is expired. But how are we doing? Votes cast 191 out of 252. It seemed to go pretty, was it just one minute that we had on the timer? Okay, so let's just do another 30 seconds since like this is the first kind of real vote that we're doing of this magnitude of importance. So let's let's give another 20 seconds here. We have 216 votes cast out of 252. Total, let's say. 223. Okay, well, votes are still kind of trickling in. So it's just wait a little bit longer. Okay, let's just give another five seconds and then we'll close this. Seems like things, the votes have stabilized. Okay, let's close voting now. Okay, let's look at our results. 99.1%. 227 votes in the affirmative, two votes in the negative. And so the majority consent agenda passes, meaning that the individual recommended, the recommended votes of the individual articles that remain on the consent agenda are now carried through as the votes on those articles. So let's just cycle through. We have a point of order from Mr. Fosca. Let's take that now. Forward.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Having voted in the affirmative, I'd like to serve notice of reconsideration on articles numbered between 46 and 70 that remain on the consent agenda.
Great. And Madam Clerk hopefully has noted that. Thank you, Mr. Fosca.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you.
And let's say, let's go back to the screens of the of the vote totals as we cycle through the. Yes, let's just run through these. And as these are running through, remember that if you miss your precinct coming up in this rotation, because they go by pretty quickly, you can always go to the left hand side of your portal window and click on view votes and you'll be able to see the votes that have been cast for everything that we've voted on so far. And anyone, and while we're waiting for this, anyone who's wondering what the notice of reconsideration that Mr. Foscat just requested, that's just a procedural mechanism that on the on the night that a meeting occurs before that meeting, before the meeting adjourns, someone who is voted in favor of an article, or in this case, the consent agenda can conserve notice of reconsideration, which means that they then have the right to have that article or these articles reconsidered at a later time where there might be more information available, more context available at that time. And that's, that's a right of those who've voted in the, on the prevailing side of a given vote. And so Mr. Foscat was exercising that right. In case some financial matters, for instance, there's new information to consider in the future, like changing some numbers. Okay, so I believe we cycled all the way through at this point. And so 10:37, let's switch over now to the two thirds consent agenda, which I'm sure folks feel like they're pretty much done with doing consent agenda stuff at this point. But the good news is that the two thirds consent agenda is much shorter. There's only 11 articles initially on the two thirds vote consent agenda. Unlike the 29 that were on the majority vote consent agenda. So hopefully we can get to this more quickly. So let's start with Article 31. So the article numbers are kind of starting over again because these are the, these are the articles with a vote quantum of two thirds, which means the the voting threshold is two thirds for it to pass. So looking for Article 31, is that on here? Yep. And so this is zoning by law amendments. And the description is administrative amendments and is a favorable action. And so we'll do the same procedure. Let's start the timer now. 20 seconds for any initial request to remove it from the consent agenda so that it can be debated and voted on individually. 10 seconds left. It's a favorable action. Five seconds. And time's expired. So Article 31 will remain on the two thirds vote consent agenda. So next up is Article 32. And Article 32 is zoning by law amendment for zoning board of appeals rules and regulations. This is a favorable action. Let's start the timer on this. And we'll go, we'll wait for 20 seconds for the first request to be registered to remove it from the consent agenda. If someone wants to debate or vote on it separately from consent agenda, eight seconds left. Five seconds. And let's see, time has expired. And so Article 32 will remain on the consent agenda. Article 33 is next. Article 33 is, a lot of these are zoning by law amendments because a lot of these are two thirds votes. This is zoning by law amendment about half stories. And so we have a, let's pause, but before we start the timer, let's take a point of order from Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, Mark Rosenthal, Precinct 14, on article, the previous article that was Article 32. I clicked the button to say remove from consent agenda and then clicked the confirm button and waited a couple of seconds and it didn't show up on the main Zoom screen. And then you said that there were no, you know, that there was no vote to remove it from the consent agenda, which points, which tells me there's a timing issue among the servers, but that in point of fact, I did place the vote before you decided that nobody placed the vote.
Got it. Okay, so yeah, that's fair. So let's yeah, let's, yeah, that's certainly not the the outcome that we want. So what, can we go back to, let's see, this was Article 32, Mr. Rosenthal?
The, let's see, ZBA to establish certain rules. That's Article 32.
32. Let's read, so why don't, we'll wait for you to vote in. And just a reminder to folks that there is like the two step process of your things like hitting that button, like there is an additional step which takes additional time. And then there's a delay in the portal as well, which I think is what Mr. Rosenthal is referring to. So yeah, so Mr. Rosenthal has registered his request to remove Article 32 from the consent agenda. And so let's, yeah, so start the timer now for 20 seconds for anyone. Remember, it's a two step process. So try to get it in as quickly as you can. 10 seconds left. So we have a second. Very good. So so Article 32 is now removed from the consent agenda. Thank you. And thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Rosenthal. I'd say, so next up is Article 33. And this is a zoning by law amendment about half stories. And this is a favorable action, two thirds vote. And and so let's start the timer on this. Let's, can we clear the point of order as well? I assume that's the previous point of order. Okay. Okay, so let's start the timer. So 20 seconds or anyone who wants to remove Article 33 from the two thirds vote consent agenda. We have a first vote, so we'll go until 29 seconds and we have a second. Okay, so let's, so we'll consider that removed from the consent agenda. And so we'll now move to Article 34 zoning by law amendment about porches. And this is also a favorable action. So no substitute motion required. So let's start the timer on this for Article 34. If you want to remove it from the consent agenda, feel free to hit the remove from consent agenda button. So at seven seconds, so we'll wait until 22nd, 27 seconds on the timer for a for a second vote or a second request, and we have two and three. So that'll now be removed from the consent agenda. Okay, so next up is Article thirty-five, zoning bylaw amendment about yard encroachment. And so anyone who wants to, and this is a favorable action, let's start the timer. So anyone who wants to remove this from the consent agenda, feel free to hit the remove from consent agenda button. You have fifteen seconds left to do that. Remember, there is also a confirmation page, so make sure you're able to get all the way through. And, and there's also additional latency, so you try to get in as early as you can. Five seconds left. And time has expired, so Article thirty-five is now removed from the consent agenda. Moving on to Article thirty-six. Articles thirty-six is the zoning bylaw amendment related to large additions. It's a favorable action, and so let's start the timer. And you have twenty seconds for the first request to remove from the consent agenda. We have one at eight seconds, so we'll go to twenty-eight seconds for a second request, and we have two and three. So it is removed from the consent agenda. Next up is Article thirty-seven, zoning bylaw amendment about unsafe structures. It's also a favorable action. And let's start the timer on that. So anyone who wants to remove this from the consent agenda, so it could be debated and voted on separately from the two-thirds focus, the eight seconds we have first request, so we'll go to twenty-eight seconds. I'm sorry, I think, okay, so we have two now within twenty seconds. Maybe, maybe I misread the point of order again. So let's, let's pause this timer. We have three requests here, and let's take the point of order. Miss, Ms. Weaver, you have a point of order?
Okay, hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, name and precinct, please.
Thank you. Janice Weaver, precinct twenty-one. I just have a question on Article thirty-five. I thought you said it was removed, and I thought it was staying on the agenda. I didn't see any objections.
Let's see, Article thirty-five, the yard encroachments. Ms. Brazil, do you have the, do I get that wrong?
I probably got it wrong, but.
No, Julie Brazil Town Clerk, I think you said it wrong, Greg, but in my notes and your notes that I can see, it is remaining on the consent agenda.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Oh, I'm sorry, I might have misspoken. I apologize for that. Thanks.
Thank you. That's all I want to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I might have confused remove and remain. Those mean different things. Okay, so, so we had three requests to remove Article thirty-seven from the consent agenda, so that is now removed. And next is Article forty, zoning map amendment, expand business districts, and this is a recommended vote of no action. So there's nothing to do here unless someone wants to suggest a, or offer a substitute motion. So let's start the timer on this. So if someone is interested in offering, okay, so let's pause the timer and take a point of order from Ms. Philan. Name and precinct, please.
Hi, can you hear me, Moderator, Michelle Phelan, precinct four? Yeah. Did I miss you skipping over Article thirty-eight and thirty-nine to hit to forty? I thought I didn't, didn't hear thirty and thirty-nine. Did I miss it?
Oh, so these are the, it's only specific articles that were pre-populated onto the, these two batches of consent agendas. One majority vote and one for the two-thirds vote. So the numbers kind of jump around. Sometimes they're sequential, but they often jump around. Because they were pre-selected, and so this is just giving folks an opportunity to just kind of yank them off the consent agenda if they disagree with, with, you know, the determination ahead of time to put them on there.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Sure. Thanks for the question. So why don't we reset the timer on this? And so let's start, so this is Article forty, it's a no action zoning map amendment, expand business districts. So it's, if someone is interested in proposing a substitute motion, they can remove it from the consent agenda. They could, yeah, and so someone, so twenty seconds has passed, so that will remain on the consent agenda. And so next up is Article forty-five. This is zoning bylaw amendment related to appeals. It is also a no action. So let's start the timer on this. And so twenty seconds now, anyone who's interested in producing a substitute motion for this no action article can request to remove it. Okay, so we have one, so that's at fifteen seconds. We'll go until thirty-five seconds to give an additional twenty seconds for anyone, then we have a second there, second request. So Article forty-five is removed from the consent agenda, and we'll look forward to Mr. Warden's substitute motion when Article forty-five comes up in the natural order. Article fifty-three is next. Okay, and this is appropriation related to financing of construction or of sewers and sewage, sewerage facilities. This is a favorable action. So let's start the timer. Anyone who wants to pull this off of the consent agenda, we have one request at six seconds. We'll go to twenty-six seconds, and we have two. So it is now removed from the consent agenda. And the last one on the consent agenda for the two-thirds vote articles is Article fifty-four, appropriation related to financing of construction or reconstruction of water mains and water facilities. This is a favorable action. So no substitute motion is required. If you want to discuss this, let's start the timer. And so we have twenty seconds for an initial request, and so we do it six seconds, we'll go to twenty-six seconds for any second request, and we have one. Great, and so that will be removed from the consent agenda. So if so it's ten fifty, I think we have just enough time to, to vote on the two-thirds vote consent agenda, and then we'll be totally done with consent agendas for, for the year. This, I don't think we're going to have one for the special, but decided that. Okay, so it's open voting now on the two-thirds vote consent agenda. And so this will require a two-thirds vote to pass. And then that vote, if it passes, will carry through to all the other votes, and this is not, this is not debatable. Because that's the nature of consent agendas. Okay, so go to your time meeting portal, and we have a minute timer, but I'll give a little bit more time if necessary. If you're having trouble voting, you can, or if you need technical support, you can get help button in the portal, but for voting in particular, you can enter your vote in the Q and A if you need to, if you're having trouble with the virtual time meeting portal. Or you can, you can call the town clerk, Ms. Brazil, at seven eight one three one six three zero seven one to get your vote in. And if you are in favor of the recommended votes on the articles and the consent agenda, I realize now that we did not show the articles that were on the consent agenda. It's actually only three, so it was on the two-thirds vote consent agenda. I apologize that I didn't visually show those. I'll just enumerate those now, and then we'll take Mr. Foscat's point of order, Article thirty-one, Article thirty-six, I'm sorry, Article thirty-five, and Article forty are the only three that are on the two-thirds vote consent agenda. Let's take Mr. Foscat's point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think you just answered the question, but nonetheless, can you please confirm that Articles fifty-three and fifty-four are not on the consent agenda?
That is correct. So, so while, while voting is open, Ms. Weyman, can you just bring up the two-thirds consent agenda tab in the spreadsheet, right? And so you get, right, so it's just, it's just those three.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, thank you. So I'll just, since there's only three of them, I'll just quickly highlight these. These are the only ones remaining on the two-thirds vote consent agenda that we're voting on right now. Any of those that are not highlighted, that are showing in white, have been removed from the consent agenda. It's only those three green rows, Articles thirty-one, thirty-five, and forty that we're voting on right now. So a two-thirds vote here would carry through to the recommended votes of those respective articles. Okay, thirty-one, thirty-five, and forty. Apologies for not showing that before the vote. We can switch back now to the voting portal. Let's see how we're doing with voting. We have two hundred and twenty-six, two hundred and twenty-seven votes cast. So let's just give another ten seconds on this. So if you haven't voted yet, please vote.
Mr. Moderator, I think several people were having trouble with the portal. So I don't know if the staff might need time to finish answering people's verbal vote.
Oh, okay. And yes, so let's give additional time if folks are having trouble voting. I'm sorry about that. Do we have any update from folks who are working with the kind of customer support? Are there kind of systemic issues? Do we know that we're dealing with, or is it just a number of individuals with issues? Do we know yet?
It was the portal. I think we might need to, to ask people to vote in maybe like two or three waves in the future.
Yeah, yeah, I, I should have requested to do that. There was a, somebody had mentioned that earlier, and I did not follow through on that. Apologies for that. In, yeah, going forward, like when we meet on Wednesday, we'll probably do like odd precincts, give them maybe twenty or thirty seconds to vote, and then allow even precincts to vote.
We're all set on this end.
Okay, so there's no pending kind of support issues that we're dealing with?
No, not at this time.
Great, thank you. So let's just take five seconds for any very last-minute votes, and then we'll close this up. Okay, so let's close voting. Okay, so it passes two hundred and twenty-nine votes in the affirmative, one vote in the negative. So the two-thirds vote consent agenda passes, and that was a yeah. That was a long slog, I recognize, and apologize for the hiccups that we had along the way. We're kind of figuring things out as we go. And so we have a point of order from Mr. Foscat.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we adjourn.
Okay, do we have a second, Ms. Brazil?
Second.
Okay, so this meeting is adjourned at ten fifty-seven PM, and so we at least cleared through the consent agendas, and so we'll, as we suggested, as Mr. Diggins moved earlier in the meeting, we are going to reconvene at eight PM Wednesday night. Folks should I actually, please sign in early to make sure that any login issues or any other technical issues are resolved. So logging in, you have fifteen, twenty minutes early at least to make sure that's all in working order. And so thanks, everyone, for working through this night. I know it was a slog again with the consent agenda. Thanks for all your forbearance, and see you all Wednesday night at eight PM. Thank you.